Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Health's regular meeting for Wednesday, April 24th, 2019. Tonight, we've moved to the lower level of Town Hall for conflicting venues for some other meetings. Be advised, this is being video and audio recorded for future broadcasting on cable, and will also appear on YouTube. So that being said, wouldn't everyone please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
To everybody. Moving on to, is it any public input? It seems in public, but I guess you want to discuss something on our agenda later on? Okay, going to number four, old business. Review, discuss, and act Board of Health fee schedule. Now, I understand that due to multiple other things that had to be done in the office, plus going to the recycling IQ training today in Boston, the fee schedule did not get completed. So if there would be a motion to table it to our next meeting, please. Some more? Motion made in second. To table item 4A to our next meeting on whatever date it is. Not quite sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was 4A. So 4A, one is the animal control fee schedule. I only have one or two questions. Maybe four or five. The kennel licensing is done through the town clerk?
Yes.
We'd be meeting with Sue to establish some fees? Or you want us to discuss it this evening?
I can meet with Sue and see.
Because there should be.
Different prices because of.
Yeah, commercial and personal, or whatever we decide to call it.
Yep.
With a number of dogs, I guess it would have an impact on the fee. I know it should with horses and the stable for those.
I don't know if it does with a horse. It doesn't with the horses. In the fact that if you're non-commercial, it's one fee. If you're commercial, it's another fee.
Yeah, do you think it would be.
We need to go over a lot.
Appropriate to, like if somebody has thirty horses, you're gonna check all the horses, right?
Well, the thing is, and I've talked to somebody about this, maybe it was Mallory. If they have, if they're making profit on all these animals, fifty dollars is minimal for a stable fee. Especially if they have a problem, because then I at least have to go back out once. Not, I mean, maybe twice, it could be three times, depending on how long it takes to clean up the problem. Most of mine in town don't have problems, but if I've got, if you've got ten, fifteen horses that they're boarding or riding or giving lessons and all that kind of stuff, I really should go out there more often than just once a year.
Yeah, so they, you don't feel the number of horses would have an impact on.
I don't think so, because, I mean, if I saw somebody that looked skinny, I would pull it, you know, I'd have them pull it out, or if it was dirty, you know, that kind of stuff. But those commercial ones, I should be at least, I should quarterly go out and make sure everything's all set, because, just because I go on December, they know I'm coming back in December, so everything will be cleaned up or moved around by the time I get there. Because we are having a problem with one, but I've been up there.
What does the state require?
The state requires me once.
Minimum or?
Minimum.
Okay.
We'd have to change our rights.
So we would want to establish a fee for return visits for problem stables?
Reinspection fee.
Reinspection fee, yeah.
Right now, we'd get it set for fifty dollars for any health reinspection, but we can include that into it.
Okay. Now, the microchip placement, twenty-five?
Yep.
That's only at rabies clinics, right?
Nope. Twenty at rabies clinics, twenty-five if I go to your house.
Oh, you do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I didn't know, I thought it was only rabies.
Nope. When people call me, I go to their house. Because some dogs don't do well in that kind of environment, and I'm putting a needle in their neck, so I want to make sure that they're calm.
Mine's one of them.
Okay. So do you want to work on that a little bit?
No, I'll work on it.
Any comments from anybody about some of the things we might be missing on this?
I assume not picking up after your dogs to waste.
Yes.
But just to clarify, you have to see it.
Right.
In the act, you can't just be told, oh, so you have to see it. Just to clarify, because I know there's some concern.
Nope. I know, I need to see it.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that's already in the books.
We've pretty much established twenty-five dollars per night. Leash law is pretty standard. I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, expanding on your question about per animal. When you do a kennel for dogs, don't you check each dog to make sure they have their vaccinations?
I check their vaccination records, yes. I don't so much.
It might not be a bad idea to charge per dog, because the more time you spend there checking all that paperwork out, I think it would probably be a wise decision. But that's just my opinion.
Five dollars a dog?
Whatever you think is accurate.
Well, you figure, I don't know, the price is off the top of my head, but they pay at least five dollars per dog at this point, because they get a license, and that's how much the license costs. So if you have under ten dogs, I think it's like twenty-five dollars or something like that. If it's, I think that's how it's set up now.
Well, if all the dogs are licensed, we know they've been vaccinated and everything.
Right. Well, yes, but I usually check for vaccinations. They do here too, but sometimes you miss things.
So if it's twenty-five dollars up to five dogs, anything over five dogs, be five dollars.
That sounds good.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Well, start with that. Okay. So I think we continue this until next meeting, when we have our fee scheduled, and then both will be completed at one time? What do you say?
Yep. Motion to table.
Second. Motion made in second. To table the animal control fee schedule to our next regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next item, 4B, review, discuss, and act, I repeat, Town of Dayton trash bags.
Mr. Chairman, both 4B and C, we sent them over to the town administrator, the procurement officer, and she had a lot of edits that she wanted to change on them. And we haven't been able to make the changes to either one. Just to give you an example, this is one of them, her markup's on it. So, so we just, we haven't gotten around to it yet, so we'd ask that you table those, and we'll have them done by the next meeting.
She's the permanent officer, so.
Yes, we gotta do what she wants. But remember, we're writing this from scratch. This isn't, we copied the last one, this is writing it from scratch, so. We tried to mimic it on some of the others we had done, but this is a request for quotes, where the other one was a bid, and the other one was a request for proposal, so they're all a little different, so. We'll get there.
Once we have this done, though, at least we'll have a template for the next time, but we're totally starting from the cold target.
That's good, she should be doing it, so.
Yeah, but she doesn't understand what we need, so that's why we had to write a lot of it, and she is tweaking the language to make it more appropriate.
So your request is to table 4B and 4C. Okay. Motion to table 4B and C, someone?
Someone?
Second.
Motion made in second. Table item 4B and 4C. I repeat, Town of Dayton trash bags, RFP households as of this waste. End of discussion.
I don't think we want any new trash, we have more than that trash bag to go through while you're at still. Correct? And HHW won't be put forth, so.
Yeah, we're about to order the last, like, another hundred cases, so we'll be good.
Okay. All favor the motion to table?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The new business, number five, review, discuss, and act, 214 Pearl Street. Turn that over to our health agent.
214 Pearl Streets, we got called out there back on March 29th, and we determined the house to be, we fit the human habitation on the first floor, and we put orange stickers on the door. On Saturday, I think the 30th, we allowed them in to clean up the apartment and let them back into it. And then, I guess it was a couple of weeks later, it was April, hmm, 14th?
Thirteen.
April 13th, we got a call, and we went back in, and the place had kind of resorted to what it was before, so again, we put the stickers on the door. At this point, we're waiting to hear from Mr. Blue for when he would like to come in and clean up the property and be allowed back in, and we haven't heard from him yet, so.
We're here relative to this property.
What's that?
We're here with some issues relative to this property. Ms. Blue.
Well, it depends where we're going here. If it looks like this is pending litigation for someone, especially this board and Town of Dayton, we'll do request an executive session with you with our attorney present.
Okay. I mean, we're just looking.
Simple stuff, but if I feel that the question is not appropriate, we're not gonna comment on it.
Okay. I mean, we're just looking to sort of get an overview of what the process is as far as deadlines for when the house is going to be, I mean, what the process is to have the house dealt with. If there's a timeframe on when the property owner has a duty to have the house cleaned or brought back.
Do you have a contact information for him? Does anybody? We can't get in touch with him, you know, at this point.
I mean, we have contact information for him, yeah.
You do have.
Yeah.
If you can provide it to this office, we can reach out to him, but.
And then if he doesn't respond continually, we'll do what we gotta do to go in and clean it.
So if he doesn't show, is there like a certain deadline of, I mean, does he have a certain number, a certain amount of time that he has to respond?
Yeah, usually seven to ten days, but we haven't, we don't have a contact information on him.
I had a question, who owns the property?
Property's name is Peter Blue. But point of order, Mr. Chairman, for the record, if we can get the name of who's speaking, so we can put it in the record.
Oh, okay.
Andrea Orlando.
Okay.
Mrs. Lisa Blue.
And you are representing Mrs. Blue?
Yes, in a probate matter.
Okay.
So, and just for the record, we received a letter from the attorney dated April 17th asking for copies of all files. And then on April 19th, we received a summons to appear before the probate court on August 7th. And so that's part of the reason why this is, like, if there's gonna be more involved in this.
Yeah, so that you know it's a probate matter, and we understand it needs to be cleaned up as sooner than later. We don't want to see it sitting like that either. We're not going to get involved with probate matters. You know, so it's, we'll do what we gotta do once we get contact information for him.
Right, I mean, we're not looking to have involved, we're just trying to understand the process as far as the house standpoint, basically what the procedures are, whether he has a firm deadline on when the property needs to be cleaned out.
Yeah, we would probably give him seven to ten days, probably less than that, because this is the second incident.
Okay.
We'd probably give him like three days.
And then what happens after the three days?
We'd probably stop finding him.
Okay.
Wind up going to court. Take the matter to housing court.
The objective is of course compliance, so we're gonna keep trying to reach him. He is the record, owner of record.
Right.
So that's who we know they go to to correct these violations.
Ultimately, ultimately, what happens is if we can't resolve anything with our orders and our fines, then ultimately, it winds up having to go to housing court. It becomes court matter. So the town would have to file in housing court against the property owner, and you get a court date, and then it's a court matter.
And we asked for a leave there, we asked for compliance.
Okay.
And pretty much, we state what the violations were and what we're looking for.
And right now, there's a restraining order in place that prevents him from going onto the property.
So that makes it difficult to get anything done. So that presents an issue. He'll come back and say he can't, I can tell you right now, because I've been in housing court more times than I can count. All he has to do is go in and say, I can't go on the property because there's a restraining order against me. And it'll just get the lead on and on and on and on. So it makes it very difficult to gain compliance unless some arrangement can be made for him to be able to get onto that property.
That would be ideal, because we're asking him to comply. To correct us, you're even asking, what's the timeframe? But he's afraid to probably go there for this instance. We have to, we have to work out something. But first, we have to make contact.
Okay, and our other question is regarding the placement of the stickers on the home. These stickers that, about the property. My understanding, it's two-family dwelling, and the stickers on the main door, is it possible to have the main sticker removed, so it's just on the affected unit?
Right, so this question's come up like four times already. The first time we went, we put the stickers on the door inside. When you go to the front door, you open that door, and inside, you go upstairs to the second unit, and there's a door for the first unit, we had put it on the inside door. This time, when we went back out, we put it on that outside door. And that was the question, just like, this is not like the fifth time.
You access your apartment from that front door also?
And I've already told them no, so.
So when you're leading to the front, when you're trying to get in, there's the sticker right there?
Yeah, and it's like I'm being punished because of Peter, when it should be on the door that goes into the house that has a problem. The back door, you put it on the door going into the house, you didn't put it on that outside door there.
I have no objections to put it right on his door.
Thank you.
Because we already have it recorded.
And it's still there, the original one is on that.
Is that how you access your apartment, through that front door?
Exactly.
So it's like, both are.
He can't even, originally, he could go to the first floor, because I stood up to the judge and said, I wouldn't mind it, as long as he doesn't bother me. I didn't want to throw him out, but it's definitely not working this way. So he was never to use the front entrance anyways, it was in that original restraining order.
I think there's one on the inner door now.
It's still there, it never was removed.
It was the back one that was removed to get into the apartment.
He went through the window on the 30th, that's how he got into the house.
We don't know what happened on the front door, but.
And the dog was back there too, if they'd taken less than twenty-four hours.
Yeah, I mean, as long as that particular unit's properly posted on all the means of appropriate means of egress, that's fine with me. So if it's interior doors, that's fine.
Yes, thank you.
As long as it's a common.
Common entrance.
It's only me that uses the front door.
I mean, if there's a specific exterior door that leads only to that unit, it would have to be placed on that one as well, but if it's a common door, front and rear for both units, and there's a separate door, front and rear for the first floor, then I'm fine with it, you know.
As you can see, we're trying to do a diligence. Contact him, post the dwelling, his last known address, so he knows that we are looking for compliance.
Well, he was, I saw him driving around in Totten the other day. He's got the dog back that they took, Secon took him that time, and he's got the dog back, and I was told that he would never have a dog again. It is what it is.
Okay, yeah, we're getting off track.
Okay, I think we should probably, I'm not.
So will someone else, someone from here coming to move the house?
I'm not opposed to moving it either, because I know both you, you can both access both apartments.
Exterior tag or?
He can't go there at all, the laws.
If the board is looking to remove the tag from the exterior, then we need to repost the interior with the new violation, because this is violation number two.
Okay.
So if you're willing to help us do that, we can do that.
When would that be done? Because I always keep that front door locked. Can you do it after your meeting? It's just a sticker or?
No, we're not.
We'll do it tomorrow.
Could you give me a time, because I do work, so that I can be there just to open it?
I think if you call the health department, and we can arrange an appointment to go out there. We can call as early as tomorrow.
Okay.
You'll do that.
Okay, how about if we, since we all agree, how about a motion to move that notice from the front door to the inner door leading to Mr. Blue's apartment?
So moved.
Second.
The motion's made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Just if you have any other contact info that, for Mr. Blue, when you call or, you know.
Is there someone specific to speak to, to call, to give the contact information to, and arrange the appointment with this person?
Either one of us will be fine.
Okay, ready?
I'm talking.
So we're both on the website, so.
Okay.
That's Ross Grass.
Thank you.
Now, I have a question for you, since we're being televised also. E B, our agent received two notices, one for documentation and paperwork. Second notice was for summons to court.
I'd have to review a copy, I didn't personally send them from the office.
Well, my point is, when you had a conversation with him yesterday.
I also didn't have a conversation.
That was Mara, the, what's the name of the company, Mara?
It's her.
I spoke with the owner, and she didn't know what I was talking about, so.
Oh, like it came from the office?
Yes, so that was the first.
What I'm looking for is that, does he have to go to court or not?
I mean, I'd have to see what was written on the actual service of this subpoena.
Well, I want to resolve this.
Okay, so this subpoena is looking for copies of any records relating to the property or to the person, and in lieu of appearance, responsive documents can be sent to the office instead of someone appearing in court.
Didn't you also get another one?
Well, no, that's the first letter that said, we want copies of all the letters, and then that one came. If you read it aloud, it says, come to court. But then down at the very bottom in small print, it says, in lieu of attending, so that's why it was.
Right. Supplier first, and then sometimes they want.
But they need it by May 8th, and I'm assuming there's gonna be more documents after May 8th, so May 8th, we send you whatever we got.
It says, any record honored before May 20th.
On May 20th, sorry.
Sometimes they might ask you to speak on that matter, so the subpoena.
We're not looking for your appearances, we're just looking for the records.
Yeah.
We're really looking for the records. Some, you know, entities choose not to provide the records and just show up in court. It's like, you have that option. Most people just like to provide the records.
So for the record, he does not have to appear so long as documents are provided?
Correct.
Well, if you can supply us his contact information, we'll move as quickly as you can, because we don't want to leave it like that either. So it's kind of our thing, just a little, just sit there, you know.
We don't have the authority to just go in there and clean or do what needs to be done. Again, that's gotta be something that's brought through court, and it's a pretty substantial process, so.
So we're seeing if we could just, because you already fixed it one time for us. Now let's just get a one-time more. We have the ability to find individuals and take them to court, but we're just trying to make contact first.
Okay, any, anything else? Okay, moving on to item 5B, before an IQ kit training. Todd and Roz went to Boston today to, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can we just leave from this door?
You can, yes.
Thank you.
Todd and Roz.
He locks behind you when you come in.
He locks behind you, yeah. Todd and Roz went to Boston today to get a little insight to the recyclable IQ kit that's out there. And how long did it last, three hours?
It was nine-thirty to twelve-thirty.
Okay, yeah.
But we drove up to Mansdale, took the train in from there, and then the train back. So it ended up, we left here at like 7:15 and got back at four, so it's a long day.
Long day, yeah.
But the training itself was very intensive, there were no breaks for nothing, we just kept going. They tried to cover a lot. We got back at four, so we didn't have time to put together a packet of everything that we covered. But bottom line is, in order to do this, you have to have a lot of things in place. There's a grant that we can apply for up to $20,000. It also includes 30 hours of Kathy Merz's time to help us. And that money can be used for a lot of things, like purchasing postcards to mail to people, signs to put up around town, like little A-frame, plastic signs, whatever you want to do. The problem is, you need to put all this together for what your scope of work is, what your, what was the other one? That's what we, standard operating procedures. You have to have it all put in place, so you can file for the grant. And you have to know how much everything's gonna cost to file for the grant. And then when you get the grant, then you've got like eight weeks to.
Implement it.
To bang, and here's the day you start. So it's a lot of work that goes into setting it up, a lot of work to run it. The actual, when you go out, you go out in teams of two, and you open the barrels, and if there's stuff in it, you take the stuff out and tag it, and like leave it on their lawn, and we gotta discuss the protocols and what we're gonna do. Are we not gonna pick up any of the recycling, et cetera, et cetera? So we gotta work it all out. There is a lot of information there. I don't personally see this happening soon, because we have a lot of prep work to do. One of the first things that we need to do, and we've already talked about this, is doing a recycling audit. We dump out one of the trucks, and we see, how dirty is the recycling now? If we know it's 35%, whatever the number is. We then have, we have a goal, and we can say, all right, hey, look, we improved it by 10%. That 10% saved us a million dollars on the cost of sending the recycling to New Bedford. So we have, we can see the goal is mostly just implementing this, so.
I think a lot of communities that do this have someone dedicated, could be like a part-time person or a grant, that they hire someone for a couple of months just to deal with recycling initiative. Or they're part of a collaborative, it's a big collaborative, Plymouth County and, or maybe Norfolk, South Shore Recycling Collaborative, and they have a full-time staff person, I think that, that's all they do. They go from community, community, they'll spend like eight or 10 weeks in each community, and that's what they do. And they work with elevation, mainly take that huge burden of time, you know, because you just don't have the time.
It is a huge burden of time. I know right now, the trash going to Bedford, Dartmouth, and New Bedford have both done these evaluations, the recycling IQ. And the problem is, is what happens is all these towns, Dyton included, you bring your trash down, you dump it on the tarmac, and it all gets swept into one big pile that then gets hauled off somewhere. So our trash could be completely cleaned, but it's being dumped for somebody else's, so the unload looks dirty. So basically, all the community is going to be better to clean up their trash. So that might be part of that collaborative that might be, need to be created in order to improve the trash.
They're pretty tapped out as far as how they go, but maybe down the line, Bristol kind of could do something like it. I know they go as far as like marrying a amount of poison, maybe Rochester.
I think you can use some of that money to hire somebody too, right?
Yes, you can hire several people. So in fact, when you go in door to door, you actually need, and they recommend like interns or college kids or whatever, to be opening the barrels. But they need a supervisor who's tracking everything in a laptop and, you know, in the cloud somewhere or whatever, so it's, you know, all hooked up. But it all has to be put in place for how it's all gonna go down, and you gotta make sure you got the equipment for them, like gloves and green vests and all that, so.
Generally, they just tag the, tag the whole container recycling, like it would be a big oops, and then, you know.
They do, they call an oops tag.
Yep, and they just plaster it right on, right onto your bin, and they don't take any of it, they just leave it there.
But some towns take your barrel, dump it out in the front lawn, and put the oops tag on it and say.
We can't do that.
No, no.
I heard they leave it.
No, 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 different towns seem to handle it differently.
I heard they just like leave it, but imagine dumping it on the. I think what we should do is ask Peter, Mr. Borges, if he sees different areas that are, if he sees a lot of contamination when it comes to the recycling and stuff.
Well, he's already identified a couple of areas, correct?
He has, and this is, ultimately, if we move forward with the recycling IQ, which I don't think we have a choice on because of the high price of recycling, you need to be working with a hauler who is going to be very customer service orientated, because there's gonna be a lot of complaining going on. We're gonna be getting a lot of phone calls, there's gonna be a lot of misunderstanding happening out there. And so just to throw that out there as we go through our RFP, that's something we need to consider when we're looking at the.
Because I, from my understanding, you have to just, no exceptions, you have to just leave it there. Recycle, contaminated recycling.
Well, they have different things.
That's the normal way it works, because if you say, okay, this one time, if you leave it there.
Well, but they also suggested that you could like save us plastic, plastic bag in there. You could take out the plastic bag, nail it into the ground with a warning and saying, hey, or tape it to the side of the bin and say, this is what we didn't take, and here's why. And you can do it that way too, but right, if you leave all the trash.
That seems a lot of time consuming, if you just say, hey, we didn't take it. We didn't take it.
Well, what she said was, the towns that did that and don't take any of the trash, they, their effectiveness increases dramatically over the ones that actually take the trash and just leave behind what's not very good. So these are, but this is the protocols that we have to talk about and figure out.
What we never did is, remember when we sent you, I sent you that little flyer, we had it from that IQ kit? We could've posted that anywhere as well. Just in-house doing our training until we actually do this someday?
Yeah, we have.
We did put it up on our website.
I mean, to see if we can plaster it as much as we can.
We have included a budget mailing to, to address this as one of the items at least. And people should, and we feel that people should probably be notified at least of what we're gonna be doing and what the alternatives are, whether it be leaving it there or not leaving it there, so.
Another way to do stuff like this with the education, it works, is you target the schools and you tell the kids about it. And when they get home, they, they wanna do something. They tell their parents, they're looking at these bins. And it's a good way to, parents and kids talking at home, and you, you won't believe how these kids wanna do something. You can do a program.
So this is all coming down to who's implementing this program? Because obviously, you know, trying to get, we got too much going on to try and implement this. It's a, it's a big program. If you wanna go to the schools and you wanna educate the town and you wanna do recycling audits and the program itself is like an eighteen-week program from start to finish, you know, it's, it's a long time, so.
Yeah, because that seems like a lot.
Is this, like say, do you hire somebody? Do you create a trash committee, a trash recycling committee, you know? Well, we've got the documents. We'll end up throwing them to you guys so you can read them and all that. But it was very helpful, but it was amazing how much time was gonna have to be spent putting this together. But the grant money's there and they're willing to help us out to do it, so it's just a matter of, you know, when and how and who, so.
How early do we think we could get started on this? The earliest?
Well, I mean, obviously, we could start on it now.
Yep.
If we were to prioritize this, but obviously, we, they know the RFPs kinda were more.
Right, exactly.
But if we were to start now, you're probably talking, what, maybe ten to twelve weeks before we'd be ready to kick off? Probably, a few months.
At least.
And then the program itself is like eight to ten weeks for it to run.
You'd be looking at probably the fall.
Would you say this way?
They say you gotta finish before Thanksgiving. And the other thing is when the clocks change, you gotta configure that into it too, so.
Did you say this may generate another, say, five hours a week of work?
I would say more like ten to twenty.
That's a bunch of hours.
Just going around and doing the trash barrels, they were saying for a team of two, to do one hundred and sixty-five bins was like four hours.
But they give you twenty thousand, though.
Yeah, but the twenty thousand dollars is for everything.
That includes paying for the stands, the postage, all of it.
Yeah.
So you chew through it pretty fast, but.
See, we have the senior, we gave some thought to the senior work off again this year. I don't know whether it's gonna be presented at town meeting or not. And that would be helpful.
That would keep costs down. But even, even if we were to hire four people to go around town and do that, we're gonna be getting a lot of phone calls.
Yeah.
And we still have to track all the data that's coming in. When people call and have a complaint, it's coming into the office, then we have to reach out to the.
But not if you do the education first. Before you start, like I'm saying, with that little bit of flyers and that school thing, I'm just saying, if you do education first and even when you, I think before you do this program, you send it out to that, that area saying, we're going to be doing this. So it's not a shock to them.
No, but what's gonna happen is when you tag that bin with the nukes and they say, why did you leave my bag behind? And it was a box of ramen noodles that they left the plastic on the outside of the cardboard. And it was like, but it's plastic and cardboard. It's like, yeah, but that's not the way you do it. And so these are the calls that are gonna come into the office.
But then you can back that up with, we, we sent this mailing out, you must've got this, we.
Oh, yeah, but the, the question was time and how much time it was gonna take. I, I, there's gonna be a lot of office time, there's a lot of field time, there's a lot of prep time, so.
Well, we don't expect you to do all this. We have to hire people.
No, well, that was, I think his question is, how many hours is it generating we're talking about here? Now, everybody in that room, what did the, what was the answer? She said, well, let's see, it's about twenty-four hours a day for about eight weeks. Is, is how much time she spent implementing her town, which was Lynn or something like that.
Twenty-four hours a day?
Yeah.
Give me an hour.
Oh, three people.
She was, I think she was, she's like, it's just, it's all consuming when you.
Total man.
What town was that?
Lynn, city.
Okay, we're talking, yeah, we're small.
But remember, you're only doing twenty percent of your trash, so it's only like particular neighborhoods that you're going into, so. All I'm getting at is, it's, it's a lot of time.
It is a lot of time.
We're gonna make copies of the package, just scan them in, send them to you so you can look at them and familiarize yourself. But we'll have to pick this up more and it may be a matter of, hey, let's do a subcommittee to do it with, you know, whoever. Not necessarily just the board, but get some other people involved because if you're gonna deal with the schools, we might want somebody from the school to help implement it at the schools, you know, so.
And with the, with the grant, you can only do that part, you can't do little, you can't implement other programs?
No, it's just for this recycling IQ.
We have a big program that we haven't even started yet, right? Because due to lack of time, which is the one that came from emergency preparedness. The latest thing that came out, I even forget what it was called now. Came out a couple of months ago.
But the, oh my, yeah, mental health and the other thing that we have to do, we have to revamp our entire.
Oh, yes.
All the orange books have to be revised.
Yeah, which is almost as big a project.
Emergency pest.
It gets into the, the personal protective equipment and the.
It, it's quite, quite a project, getting that one going too, so.
Never mind Stormwater, so. Still haven't looked at the Bristol Aggie plans yet, the role that's this big.
Did the retrack recycling grant open yet?
I believe it has for some of them, yes. And this one here is, is up there. I, I can pull it up, but.
Because I mean, that, I mean, you can do that in a matter of a couple of hours. Semi, I mean, usually you get, I don't know, you can get up to, you know, ten grand. And you can use that for a lot of different things.
Use that for education.
Yeah, the dividends or something like that.
And you can do all those mailings, like I'm saying, you can use some education.
Let me know, except I don't know.
Well, again, it's more the, what are we gonna do and when are we gonna do it and.
Because they give you the money and then you have the money to use for, you know, you can use it for containers, you can use it for education. I mean, even, I think they even, with the recycling increases, they even allow it to offset some of the recycling costs, so.
Yeah, I, I'm leaning more towards that way, where we can review this material, but we look at this, these other grants.
It might be something.
And something we can do more in-house right now.
So much other stuff going on right now.
While we're looking at those IQ kits, and a lot of stuff we're gonna be doing as well.
Well, here's more hours.
Well, we'd get the funds and all we do is print, some of the stuff we just print it out, right? And mail them out.
A lot of it is printing and mailing for education. But I think you have to reinforce that.
While we're looking at the IQ kit and seeing if we're actually gonna do this, we could already get the word out, get the, even if we, even if we get a little less contamination, it's a, it's a win.
Well, I know we're spreading the word. Anytime somebody comes in to buy trash bags, anytime somebody calls and asks a question about, hey, I'm new to town or whatever. So we've been spreading the word, but it's.
Some people just don't get it. When they look at the recycling.
Look them in the eye and tell them, yeah.
They just look at it and say, oh, I didn't know, I didn't know.
It's, it just opened, so it's due like early in mid-June, so someday in May.
Also, I think Kathy Merz was looking for us to use money. She goes, you passed, you've got money sitting there, use it, so.
You can use that for.
All kinds of things. I used to get recycling containers.
They've broadened what you can use it for substantially.
Do we check off all the boxes and all the dividends? What do you call it? I don't think we have the swap shed, swap shed and stuff like that, but we check off a lot of stuff, compost, you name it, right?
We do have a lot of the stuff and we are eligible for a lot of money, so.
You get a lot of points just for having the pages you throw on the website, so.
Yes.
You actually get more points now because we have the text I always said.
Yeah, there you go.
It's another point or two.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll look to further this discussion at the next meeting when we have some more information, so.
Did they say all communities are eligible for the grants?
Well, you have to do your retrack stuff before they'll give you the money. But basically, any community, even if you just have a drop-off transfer station, the grant money's there, but that's only up to six thousand dollars. But yes, every community is encouraged to do this. We have to clean up our trash. It doubled and from what, fifty-five to a hundred and ten dollars a ton to get, for the recycling. So we have to clean it up statewide, countrywide, so.
So the money may go further than you think because I love a good challenge, so I took the numbers that he said from the town of Lynn, city of Lynn, based on the hours she spent. If you use population as a direct ratio, it would take us about a month worth of labor to equate to what she did. So even at thirty dollars an hour, you're talking about five or six grand just for payroll. So that leaves a little bit of money on the table to do the other stuff, if it's twenty thousand, so it can be done.
Of course, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I didn't say it couldn't be done, just it's, right, do we, do we wanna do it in-house? Do we wanna hire somebody to, to run the program? Do we, do interns, seniors?
Send the stuff.
I don't think, you can't do, I don't think you can do it in-house. I asked one time. You can't add to somebody's salary. Like it gives up, you gotta pay, you gotta hire somebody in. You can't pay, you can't, like I couldn't get an extra.
You can't take an extra five grand to.
It doesn't work that way.
Oh, no, not an extra five grand, but I'm saying, are we gonna run it with the people in-house to do it? Or are we gonna hire somebody to come in and hear, you're gonna run this program?
Yeah, if we did, we'd volunteer and if they did it, they'd get paid.
These are all, these are all the things that need to be.
I'll, I'll can go on a Saturday, whatever it is, if he picks up on a, I can go check some days, all mornings, but then I have to go to work.
I'll get out there like five or six in the morning.
Whatever. I'm actually always driving by, Peter. He's coming over the bridge and I'm going. Think, it never fails.
I'll give you a wake-up call.
Yeah, yeah, you see that? We'd have to hire someone.
So I think it's very, very realistic for Dyton to implement. I think with the townspeople that we have who are dealing with, dealing with a lot of single-family houses, like Lynn, they had a lot of three families and renters. Martha's Vineyard, like in the summer, they have all these renters. They don't care about recycling. They just wanna pay their weekly rent and move on, so.
They get sixty-gallon containers though, so that's a lot more difficult to go through with.
It is. But what they do apparently is they shake the barrel. And they, so if it feels really heavy, then you know there's a bowling ball in there. Or if it's really like wet, then you know, that's how they do it with the big barrels. But we, because we have the smaller bins, it's a lot easier to look for bad stuff in there, so. We have an advantage with not using the big barrels.
Which may change depending on who we.
Right.
So again, something to think about while we're, if we're gonna implement recycling IQ, the hauler has a lot to do with it.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments on that? I'd like to look at the information.
Yep, so we just didn't have time to put packets together before.
Okay. Moving on to number six, authorize expenditures, payroll and bills.
All right, we have payroll from April thirteenth, the entire month of April, and April twentieth. A grand total of forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. And we have two invoices here for Verizon and National Grid.
Sorry, I put the test longer on.
That was a little high. Four thousand, eight hundred and seventy. I wanna transfer. So you're missing a number then?
Nope.
So four hundred and eighty-seven dollars of payroll?
No, sorry. Missed one zero.
Four thirteen is eighteen hundred, then we have a nineteen hundred and an eighteen hundred and a twelve hundred.
Okay.
And Verizon and National Grid for a one hundred dollars.
Just double check.
That'd be nice, that is the order of pay.
Take away.
That's why you, that's why you additional hours are in the hole.
Sure, probably will help.
Just one zero, so.
Look it up, I'm your asshole.
Okay, any questions, anybody? No, moving on. Inspector's report, animal control officer, please.
Um, not much, only because I was away for a week. I had a lot of telephone calls, but I didn't do much. Lisa from Swansea came in and took care of the two things that needed to be taken care of. And do you have to say, it is now spring and summer, dogs are not allowed down on the track, on the playgrounds? I had a woman last night, I was here for a different meeting, and I said, you, I saw her walk off the track. And I says, you can't have your dog down there. And I got argument. So you can't do it. It's not allowed. I don't care if your dog is the sweetest thing in the world, that's not the point. It's not allowed.
Well, it's unfortunate you got an argument and you could just simply say, well.
I said to her, I said, well, I'll just.
We're gonna find you.
Well, I'll just call the police. And she says, well, I know police officers. I said, well, yeah, okay. Then she decided she was gonna leave, but.
Warning is good.
Right, I gave her a warning. And she says, well, how about all the other dogs that are down here? So I think I'm gonna start patrolling at night, at least down here, because there's a lot of people down here using this, down here in the playground. See what happens.
Walk up to Sweet Snoll and walk down to the river and walk back and, you know, that's a nice little walk.
Yeah, they have places they can walk as long as the dog's on leash. Then I had to stop a woman today because she was riding her bike and the dog wasn't on a leash. We have a leash law. It needs to be on a leash.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
All right, good enough.
Well, you've, you've heard about most of it. We've spent a lot of time the last couple of weeks dealing with two fourteen Pearl Street. We're also getting a bunch of septic plans of command, one of which was in IA system. So it took some time to research that. Bristol Aggie filed their site plan, so I gotta review that for Stormwater Committee, which I haven't done yet, but we had some training today. And a bunch of perk apps are starting to roll in, so it's, it's getting a little bit busier. I wanna say like yesterday, we had like fifty phone calls or something. I mean, it was Monday, it was just, it was crazy.
That's pretty average, isn't it?
Yeah, it's usually around thirty-ish, so it was, it was a really busy day, but.
About time of the year.
Yep, so. But other than that, yeah, I'd love to see recycling IQ go into effect. I mean, we haven't heard anything really about the pink bags. Nobody's saying good, bad and different, but we see the pink bags out when I drive around town.
There are a few people complaining they're not being picked up.
I think a, a big part of that was due to the Patriots' Day holiday.
Yep.
With the trash being off, but they weren't off. So I think that was a, it's a learning curve. There's probably, you know, gonna be a handful of times when it's a little off, but.
They picked up my stuff.
I'm gonna put my first bag out.
Probably, we'll see. They were notified in that flyer what the holidays were and we follow.
Yep, they were.
But that's expected, that first week, if it's a little.
But the, but the kid doing it, the room seems to be very good and responsive and all that. And you just call him and say, hey, you missed the street, and then he goes out there and takes care of it. So as long as we know about it, we can reach out to them, so.
Yeah, so if you hear anything, just tell, call us, let us know, we'll send them.
Not meant to replace the, like the question, collection bin salvation army. It's meant to supplement that and things that they won't take, they will take. So it keeps a lot of material that can be reused for various things out of our waste stream. A lot of that stuff actually does weigh substantial amount, so it's, it's good to.
Oh, yes.
Probably should talk about it.
You got something else?
We do. We have, we have one more thing and Jim could probably fill you in better because he was more involved than I than I am. But I'm gonna do one thing before you do that. The baseball complex is looking to open. I'm going down tomorrow to do an inspection, but we got their well test back.
Okay, good.
They are high in iron and extremely high in manganese. So, now they say it's bottled water is what they serve, they're not serving top water. But I think they should be putting in a filter to catch both of those. Manganese?
Do you?
Yeah.
They should have something on place.
They're gonna need something, because otherwise they're gonna rot on all the fixtures.
I usually recommend, once you reach ten times your amount, to put a filter in. It's mainly just to protect your, your fixtures or pipes like that.
Not do a water fountain or two, what's that?
Kevin usually does the inspections, I mean, I think.
I don't remember a fountain.
No, there's a water fountain, but.
The, the health effects aren't really an issue, but it's definitely an equipment issue.
Taste and.
Yeah, that's still, that's still, those two are still secondary.
So I was, my opinion, I was gonna let them open, but I want them to put in a filter and give them whatever, thirty or sixty days or something to get one in there because I think they need it. And if we, if we let them go beyond the season, then it's not gonna get done till the day before they.
You have to make sure on the application, they can't go more than sixty days.
Sixty days for what?
For operation. Sixty open days or they become a public water supply.
Oh.
So you have to say, how many days are you operating? Is fifty-nine or less? Once they become over sixty, they're a public water supply. That's what I always wrote on my inspection form.
I will find that out. Okay, I'm gonna be there tomorrow, so we'll find out.
The season, even if they say we wanna run longer, you're not gonna make it, so they have to go fifty-nine days, right? The max.
Do you wanna keep that or? So I think that was all I had, if you wanna.
How's our board? Funny, what does it mean tonight?
There was a hearing.
The board.
zoning board?
That's at the old town hall next door.
Okay.
Upper, upper level.
No, that's next week.
No, it's tonight. Now it's time.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, seven o'clock, that's, that's just been a mess for a while there.
That's good.
That was all I had.
So I just wanna bring the board up to speed on a problem that is sort of evolving and not in a good way. The fire chief came in to see me yesterday and briefed me on the Dyton Nursing Center's owners are falling into financial hardship fairly quickly. So, you know, we obviously have concerns, cause I believe the current count is twenty-six people who are residing there. So I know that the chief has reached out to the Department of Public Health already, they are involved. There's been a dialogue between those two departments. Currently, we don't have any issues with the public safety or building safety parameters, sprinkler system, fire alarm, that's all still functional. The chief and I have both said, the minute those go down, for one reason or another, we're gonna vacate the buildings. So that said, I just want you to be aware that this is, this is brewing, so to speak, and it's gonna be a collaborative effort between the town and the state if this continues to go down the wrong path.
I worked for a town that their nursing home closed. It was a little, it was sad, but they found obviously places for them.
Right.
And the state is the ones ultimately that oversee nursing homes. We, we do the, the food part, but they oversee, they're the one that funds them.
Yeah, likewise locally, we make sure that the building safety parameters are all functional, inspected